We, uh, I would like to call the Planning Commission for Guthrie and for Warren. I would like to have a roll call, please.
Brent Linford?
Here.
Kaylee Mills?
Here.
Erin Rooney?
Here.
Shelby Vreeland?
Here.
And Abe Gassimpor.
Abe.
All right, got everybody.
Are there still any public comments?
Uh, I was gonna say, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I was gonna use it as an opportunity for a couple of things. One is, we have a new Planning Commission member who, um, is Kaylee Mills. She was, uh, recently appointed by the Planning Commission, so now we have a full five-member, uh, Planning Commission. Uh, the other thing I wanted to announce, just in case there's public here for that, so they don't have to wait through an entire meeting and then find out nothing's gonna go forth, the, uh, PC application twenty-three zero-one-two, which is for the five-twenty-one South Ash Street, which was a church, that application has been withdrawn. So, that will no longer go forward, and we will not hear that tonight. So, if there was any public here that wanted, or was for that, uh, they wouldn't have to wait around. However, if you were and still want to stay around, that's fine. And that's all I have, unless there's other...
Is there any public comment, non-related to the agenda? Number three, the approval of previous minutes from July thirteenth.
I will make a motion, since I was here.
One second, Brent, all right. Brent Linford?
Yes.
Erin Rooney?
Yes.
Shelby Vreeland?
Yes.
And Abe Gassimpor?
Yes.
All right, perfect.
Item number four is a discussion of possible action proposed, the housing initiative built and invest in Guthrie. It's big.
Big.
That would, uh, support neighborhood infills and affordable housing options for locals, and offering set up pre-approved building type. I'd like to have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this item was, uh, continued from the last Planning Commission meeting. Uh, there was some, uh, questions that the Planning Commission had, uh, in that, so I'm gonna kinda go over it again to, uh, that, and then obviously be able to answer any questions. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to mention was, I did talk to, uh, Commissioner Gassimpor about some of the, um, things that were within the first one, and one of his concerns was the ability to have it anywhere in the city, uh, in that. And I didn't disagree with the fact that, at this point, if we limit it to the original platted area, which it was really intended for, uh, in that, I don't think there's any issue. I don't have any issue with that. Uh, it's still gonna meet its intended purpose in that. Uh, also with that, there is an opportunity down the road, if the program does do well, to add, uh, you know, more houses, and maybe homes that are, if you wanna say, more appropriate for the larger lots, or things like that. But this would at least be a good starting point, and again, limiting it to the original platted area will not negatively affect the program whatsoever. So, having said that, um, just like, uh, Eddie Faulkner, our city manager, had mentioned last time, uh, this is a program to, uh, my, my intent with it was twofold. One, for, um, to incentivize, uh, development within our original platted area. We have water, we have sewer, uh, in that area streets. Uh, obviously, if people build in there, we're not creating additional streets, we're not creating additional infrastructure that we have to maintain. And by being upfront, and having the plans already done, and every, all that, we also allow, uh, some savings to the applicant, uh, in time, as well as actually financial. Uh, there's probably a three to five dollar savings, uh, to an average person that would go through this program, uh, in that, and then again, saving the time that they would have to take to develop these plans, uh, in that. And then, the other part of it was kind of an affordability factor. Uh, I targeted it to more moderate homes, uh, around a thousand square feet, eleven-hundred square feet, nine-hundred square feet, uh, to, again, try to provide more affordability with that, and also the ability to build on the smaller lots. We've obviously reduced the land size, as well as the amount of lumber that's necessary. So, with those, with those two aspects, you can also make a more affordable home, uh, in that, especially for, uh, currently, the ones that are, you know, looking to get into the market. Uh, even that cost savings could also be, uh, put over on the rental side, so even if, uh, somebody wants to build this house and rent it out, obviously, they're gonna have cost savings in there, and so the rents should not be, uh, probably as high as they would otherwise for bigger homes, uh, in that. So, that's kind of the quick overview of the program, and, and what it is intended to, uh, try to, I guess strive to be. From a cost standpoint, we had money left over in our abatement budget. Uh, we were fortunate this year that we had a lot of, uh, vol-, uh, excuse me, voluntary compliance, and a number of them that wanted to, uh, submit permits to actually rehabilitate their homes, so we didn't have to spend as much in our abatement fund as we normally did. So, I was looking at throwing, oh, I shouldn't say throwing, looking at using it at another housing aspect, which would be to privatize new housing, uh, in that. So, uh, obviously, this is going to you guys today. Uh, if you do approve it, in that, it would move forward to the City Council to not only approve the program, but also to approve the funding and the, um, basically the budget that was necessary. So, with that, I'll hand it back to the Commission, if you have any questions.
Where's the location of that again?
Oh, one, one second, sir. I'll hand it back to Commission, and then we'll have public comment. Yeah, yep.
Do you have any comment?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to voice my support of this program, especially if we look at the amount of development that's happening in the county versus the amount of development that's happening in the city limits. Um, I think we'd really need a catalyst like this to help spur, spur housing opportunities. Uh, I think this will really enable, you know, smaller builders, and even the property owners to, to really re-beautify Guthrie, and to, uh, to help, along with, uh, the other factor of this that I'd like to see is the updated building and zoning code. I think this combined with that will really change things as far as the development we're seeing outside of the county versus inside the county and the disparity there. So, I, I personally am very in favor of this big initiative. That's all I have.
The, we have discussed this before, um, the Guthrie proper overlays extends from east side to the west side, when you sent me there.
Yes, yes.
So, we have a two-section Guthrie proper overlay.
Yes, yeah, 'cause, and, and when I reference the original platted area, I'm talking, obviously, of some of the original subdivisions that were in the community. Uh, the Guthrie proper, West Guthrie, East Guthrie, Capitol Hill, Capitol Heights, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, they were indicate, or I did indicate all of those in the program's, um, uh, packet there, uh, in that. So, a portion of that did then fall under the overlay district, which has enhanced design and architectural standards to have compatibility with the early designs of homes in our community, bungalow, craftsman, Victorian-type style homes, and that. Uh, it doesn't encompass the entire plat- or original platted area, uh, but again, as you indicated, there's a good chunk of it on the west side. Uh, a lot of the central part of it is already encompassed by the historic district, and then, of course, we have some on the eastern part. Most of what was left out is the southern part, uh, so it's along East Lincoln, East Grant, uh, and Perkins, and that. However, this program, uh, still would be able to be utilized in those areas, uh, in that, even though, again, it's, it's meant to be for the overlay district, it wouldn't prevent anybody on, you know, those, uh, subdivisions or those areas to utilize this program, 'cause it has a similar layout in terms of the street network, block, uh, you know, alley access, and all of that.
The thing that we have discussed, part of this in the last meeting, uh, I wish we would have stepped up, rather than coming down to little bitty tiny houses. I mean, that's just one thing that I was concerned, I wish we could. I mean, to me, it's stepping down. But, it, to me, uh, in my books, Guthrie is in three sections. We have a west side, which, uh, for seventy, eighty years, has been ignored, uh, for a long, long time, because of the flooding situations and all kind of stuff. But then recently, since the bridge has been fixed, the flood is hopefully been taken care of, and I really see that's west side is blooming, west side is coming alive. I mean, finally, I mean, looked like before, it was another suburb, wasn't even part of the Guthrie, but it is now. So, and then, and they're doing really good. I mean, the west side is improving, you know, we have parks, we had a lot of buildings, and everything is being remodeled. So, when you're coming in east side, then from Oklahoma to the north, we are Oklahoma, Cleveland, going back to Nobleson, north, all the way to that upper elementary. Those are our nice neighborhoods, and they are classy neighborhoods, a lot of Victorian homes. So, the only part that I really see this city is screaming for help, is from Harrison South to University. That's the area, if we, if we're gonna examine, this thing has not been proven. I mean, it's just, I'm, I'm sorry to bring this example, but what I'm saying, you're claiming that you have a, some kind of, uh, cure for some kind of virus. But, what I am saying is, let's just apply it to the people that they really need it. We don't need to spread it over the town, we don't have to, at least to see how it goes. In real estate, any decision that you make, you're not gonna see the result tomorrow. It's gonna take seven, ten years before you really see if you done good or not. So, my question is, rather than trying to vaccinate the whole town, or, or part of here and there, let's just put it where it needs it. That part of the town, it's in screaming for help, and if, at least we can try it over there. If it worked, then, then we can move it anywhere we want.
Well, that's, uh, kind of essentially, that's what I've done, uh, with limiting it to the original platted area. Uh, I, I understand what you're saying, because you're right, we do have some of the larger homes, probably, you know, like Oklahoma Harrison, but we also have a significant number that are around this size. We have a number that are duplexes and that. And the reason that it works, and the reason that it fits in there, is it maintains the character of that neighborhood, and that's the critical element, is that design and character aspect. It's hard to tell whether it's a, you know, a single family versus a duplex, or even the smaller ones still fit in with the larger ones. It provides that diversity, uh, that is critical for, you know, the, the different, if you wanna say, buying ranges or whatever. And as you indicated, this probably isn't going to work, or probably be a good thing to be in Mission Hills right now, uh, in that, or some of the newer subdivisions, and that's why I was saying, is down the road, if this does work well, we could look at options for some larger homes, and homes that are probably more fitting for the south. 'Cause you, you brought up a very good point, and I say this all the time. Our community is very diverse in land use, 'cause like, we were just talking, we have the original platted area, we have a more centralized area that's primarily commercial, but again, we have like Mission Hills, and we have some apartments. And then, to the south, we have large lots, basically a country-style living, you know. Uh, most of the homes out there are on an acre to ten acres, one house, and that. And, uh, part of the problem we probably had with our codes is, we have a blanket for all of that, and, and we have to get away from that. We have to recognize the different areas and that. So, this is kinda taking into account that original platted area and, and, you know, the development style that happens, and is basically likely to happen even without this program. This just allows a little bit more incentive and time savings and money savings for people to, again, even have that affordability. So, I hope that answered your question, but, uh, I understand what you're saying.
And I did wanna address, last time I was noticing some of these housing plans, uh, we've got a two-story home for the fifty-foot wide lots, and it's noted as only nine-hundred to eleven-hundred square foot. Is that, that's gotta be per floor?
Roughly, it would be, or over, yeah, 'cause a- again, those were just generalized, if you wanna say, uh, type things. Like you said, if you go two-story, you're probably gonna have, you know, like you said, eight, nine-hundred per floor, so you'll end up with maybe sixteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred. The single stories will probably obviously be around the nine-hundred to eleven-hundred, but, uh, yeah, that, that was just a, the, the idea was not to put out there that we're gonna be building, you know, four thousand square foot homes.
Yeah.
Right now, with, with the program.
Is there any public comment?
Did you, yeah, if you could step up there, sir, thank you. Nah, if we, 'cause we need you to have on record, and that, I appreciate it.
Your name, sir?
Yes.
Lorenzo Hathorin, and I'd like to, I agree with you, and on the east Guthrie, that's where I live, but also, I didn't understand whether west Perkins is, or, and I, that's new for me, I guess. What the development is that you're talking about, and I saw something about west Perkins, I started coming up with that.
There's no west, we don't have anything in west Perkins.
Oh, no, but there, the, we're referring to the west side, basically, everything west of the river. Yeah, yeah, west of the river.
My name is Carmen Bennett, and I happened to hear you all mention a program. Sorry, I haven't been attending these meetings, but what program are you speaking of, and what housing development that you, what housing development are you all speaking about, and the place where you all are talking about building these affordable houses?
It's, uh, actually not a development. I was gonna say, if you, I was, I can clear. It's not a specific development. What these are, is the city is going to develop actual building plans for homes. So, uh, there will be an actual construction set of plans, and there'll be ten different, uh, options. So, literally, you as a property owner, if you have a lot in town, and you wanna come in and build a home, you can come in and literally like, look at a catalog and say, "Oh, I like that house." And so, we can say, "We got the plans already done, we can issue you a permit." All we would, uh, need to do is make sure that the house is cited proper, or the, uh, the house fits on the lot setbacks and that, but issue you a permit. So, these would be anywhere in town, and they're gonna be driven by specific property owners or the private property owners. There's not one developer or one particular area. Again, it's gonna be limited to that, so you could have three or four over on, you know, west Perkins, you could have three or four over on this side, and in between, uh, in that. But that's what we're developing, is a program that would have pre-approved plans, so literally you could just walk in and get a permit.
Thank you.
They're worth looking at.
Is there any other comments?
And, uh, what would be the limitation on square footage for these programs for the homes? What would be the, the range on the square footage?
Again, the intent is to keep it, uh, relatively smaller, probably, again, around a thousand. If, if we're looking at two stories, they're gonna be around fourteen, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred square feet, 'cause again, part of the idea was to ta- try to keep an affordability factor in there. Uh, if anybody, you know, goes out there and tries to build even a twenty-five hundred square foot house nowadays, you know, you're not gonna get it for a couple hundred thousand dollars, uh, in that. So, the intent, again, was to try to keep the square footages lower, which will keep the cost lower in that. But they're still, they're gonna be obviously still a sizable house that a small family, uh, could, uh, obviously live in, or, you know, a, a couple, or even, you know, uh, some of them small enough where you have the aging population, where, uh, they just want a nice home, they're currently living in a large home, they, uh, don't wanna maintain it anymore, can't maintain it. So, this gives options where they can maybe build a smaller home that is more suiting for, you know, their lifestyle and that.
Rooney, have to come?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
One second.
Okay, hold on. We have motion by Rooney and Mills?
I, uh, have some, are we gonna limit it, uh, to just the Guthrie overlay? Guthrie proper overlay?
The, the original platted area, which encompasses a slight bit more than the overlay, but the vast majority of that is the Guthrie proper overlay district.
You're not gonna do it all over Guthrie?
No, no.
Except just the overlay?
Yeah, just the subdivisions that were listed in the packet, uh, that I updated, which again, are, again, like Guthrie proper, West Guthrie, East Guthrie, Capitol Hill, basically all around in this area where we are now of the original subdivisions. So, down like, by Mission Hills, or as you go down south, uh, in that, it would not be for, uh, that, this program would not be for that at this point.
So, this program could go to Warner, Manthor, Washington College?
Yes.
It would go?
North of College, no, because again, once you get north of College...
North of College, there's no more historic...
Well, I mean, yeah, no, but that's what I mean, is it wouldn't be in there, but yes, it would still be on portions of Washington, east and west, and that. Okay, we have a motion. In a second, any further discussion?
Uh, I'd just like to say that, uh, conversely, if you didn't do this, some of these properties would never be developed, because they just aren't big enough to put a, a larger home on. And, also, would you rather have a vacant lot, or even a lot that has junk all over it? That, to me, is gonna be more of a drawback than having a newer home that's a little bit smaller than the average, but still a nice home, is gonna really bring property values up, rather than pull them down, rather than have this, say, a house that was abandoned, or burnt down, or whatever, and then, nobody does anything about it, it's, it's there. So, I, I think it's a, a plus to do that.
Any further discussion?
I'm still, uh, I might not be warning Guthrie, but I love Guthrie, man. I mean, this is not a good step. I mean, the areas, we don't need nothing. West side is taking care of themselves, you got all kind of stuff, we don't need to put those little tiny houses. You call it marginal, I'm calling them tiny houses. It's just, we don't need to, when the west side is fine, even from Oklahoma to the Nobleson, we're fine. I mean, the area, the needs concentrated in that area for right now, that's my argument, but I'm not gonna go.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's fine. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Brent Linford?
Yes.
Kaylee Mills?
Yes.
Erin Rooney?
Yes.
Shelby Vreeland?
Yes.
And Abe Gassimpor?
No.
Okay. It passes four to one.
Next item, item five, PC application of twenty-three, I, zero, zero, seven, discussion of possible action proposed for rezoned on the C2. PUD, general commercial land unit development, that, uh, approved three-unit residential development to C2, or general commercial, for the property located as four twenty-four, South First, in Guthrie, in block twenty, seventy-two, and north half of lot fourteen and fifteen, and west half of lot thirteen, and the west half of, the south half of the lot fourteen. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this was also continued from the last meeting. Uh, the applicant wasn't present, uh, and the Commission had some questions of the applicant. The applicant is here, uh, this time, so if you do have some questions of the applicant, uh, obviously, they can answer those. I'll briefly go over again, uh, what they're looking to do. They had, uh, got in a planned unit development, it was approved at the council back in January of this year, uh, I believe it came to the Commission in December of, of last year. Uh, they were looking for a three-unit, uh, residential development, uh, down the street here. Uh, one of the big reasons they needed to go through the, um, zoning process, or the PUD process, was, uh, the fact that the current code does, uh, not accommodate, uh, you know, this type of development. And so, they went through, and they had a number of conditions on there. Since that time, uh, the applicant has decided that, uh, you know, they can explain more if you, if you want, but they essentially don't wanna go through with that project. The one thing about a planned unit development is, is it is specific to that property, and a development plan is approved. So, if they were to sell the property, somebody would have to build it as approved. And so, obviously, the only way to, um, get rid of that is to revert it. And so, the only way we have to revert it is to go through the exact same process that we got it approved through. And so, that's what they're looking to do here. And the original zoning on that property was C2, uh, in that. In our C2 zoning district, it does allow residential uses, uh, in that area. We still have a lot, or not a lot, but we have residential uses that are in the C2, uh, in that. But that's why it's going back to C2, 'cause that's simply what it was before, uh, in that. So, with that, I'll give it back to the Commission, if you have any questions, to me. And as I indicated, the applicant is here, so if you have any questions of them.
Could, could you explain PUD, please?
Yeah.
How does a three little lots would have a PUD, PUDs planned unit development? Could you explain that to me?
Yeah, the, a tr- I guess, tried not to get too involved, but back in the day, a planned unit development was more for a large-scale kinda city. Uh, it's become a mechanism, uh, more in the modern day, to be a avenue to have, um, approval processes for developments that may not fit within a current code. No matter how up-to-date a code you have, uh, you know, and that, there's always going to be something that comes along that may not fit perfectly. But, it may be a desirable development to the community. And so, that's what the planned unit development, uh, offers, and it doesn't limit it to a specific, um, size. You know, it doesn't say it has to be ten acres, or it has to be certain number of units. It's just a process that allows for, again, uh, certain developments that may not fit perfectly within our current code, to be able to still get approved, 'cause the alternative is honestly a no, you know, in that.
So, in that area there, it's pretty much everything is? That area is all having a planned unit development?
No, no, just this particular property. Yeah, just this property. And that's why they went through it, yeah. And so, if we revert it back to C2, it just stands with the rest of the zoning in there, yeah. But it doesn't have this tied to it, and that's the, that's the issue that the applicant doesn't want to have.
Remind me again, difference between C1, C2, and C3?
C1 and C2, uh, the easiest way to explain it is, uh, C1 is more of a neighborhood commercial. It's set forth for a kinda retail services. C2 is set forth more for our general, so you, uh, start to introduce more of automotive repair, more intense C2. C3 is just basically a C2 version, but it's more along the corridor, like the highway. Uh, and that's why it's like highway commercial. Uh, it generally doesn't have a whole lot of difference. Uh, it may allow, um, you know, it, it, by its name, puts more of what you would typically have on a, on an interstate or a highway. We really don't have much C2 zoning, 'cause most, everything that's come forth has been C2. We have a few properties along the interstate where it's, uh, intended to be that's C3.
Okay, and then you can always, if something is zoned C2, you can always build below, so you can build residential, and...
Yes.
But not vice versa?
Right, right, 'cause our code, uh, says that any permitted use within the R2 zoning district is also allowed within the C2 zoning. And obviously, a single family, or, you know, a duplex, or whatever. Uh, the one thing the code says is that if you are in a C2, and you're going to build residential, you have to meet all of the applicable residential standards. So, if you wanna go for a duplex in the C2, you have to meet all of those, you know, minimum lot size, setbacks, all that. Like you said, currently, it doesn't allow a mixed use.
I've got more, but, I've got two issues.
Did you have, did you have a question from the owner of the last group?
I have one, one for that as well. Um, okay, then I'm just looking at our future land use map.
Mm-hmm.
With, I don't know if we can pull it up on the screen or not, but if we look, you know, the whole right side of the map from Division to First Street there, uh, north and south is all future land use for commercial, and we've got a lot, I don't know if this is something that can be updated, or if this is, is set in... And we've got a lot, I don't know if this is something that can be updated, or if this is, is set in stone, but there's been, there's a lot of residential in that area, I don't know how accurate the map is.
The zoning map's accurate, so is the future land use map. You know, as we've talked before, our general plan is twenty-one years old, or comprehensive plan, sorry, is twenty-one years old. There are many aspects of the comprehensive plan that are still very valid and still true today, with a lot of the goals and policies. One of the things that is probably slightly outdated is the future land use map, because some of these areas that were envisioned to be commercial probably were more likely to be residential, or even, you know, multifamily, or mixed use in that type of thing. So I think at some point down the road, we will probably look at some updates to it. We don't need to overhaul. But one thing to keep in mind is, currently with those commercial properties, right now, the way the code is, there's no way they can develop commercially. Because with the parking requirements, and a lot of the other requirements, there's no physical way to do it in that.
So that leads me to my next point here, looking at the zoning map, and I'm seeing, it almost looks like some of the C two and R one is flip-flopped, where we've got some of the properties along Division that are zoned R one, but I know that we've got C two uses on them. And also, you know, a lot of these C two properties here along First Street are actually residential. So just something that I think everybody should be aware of, of some of the zoning and land use issues.
Yeah, the easy answer for that is, most of those buildings predated our current zoning. The zoning code, the first zoning code for Guthrie was, I think, in sixty-four, sixty-five, is the mid-sixties in that. And unfortunately, at that time, they did not do a very, if you want to say, good analysis of existing uses. They, I think, just literally went, you know, R one for this area, almost did it like a future land use map in that. So we do have a number of properties that currently have commercial uses. As they've come along, I've talked with property owners to bring their zoning and compliance with the uses. Over the last couple of years, we've had a couple of those. Even like where Dean's wrecker used to be, that was an ag zoning. There was one on the west side that has the commercial, I think it was like a little gas station or whatever, right across from the school. We re-zoned that to C one, it was R one. So, you know, a city of this age in that, and plus, again, there probably hasn't been the focus of the zoning in that when, you know, things were a little more simpler, I guess, to put it in that. So as time is going, we're trying to get that, because it's in the benefit of the property owner, too.
Yeah, and again, this leads me to my third point, a question for the property owner. You know, we don't want these issues to hold people up like we have this time, and I guess my question for you is-
If you could come up there, sir, thank you.
One, my, first, my apology for slowing you guys up, that is not our intent here at all. We definitely intend to help the communities as much as possible. But is your desire still to change back to C two, or is there anything else?
No, C two's fine, just to get it back to what it was before, so that we could do something with it in the future, but we have no immediate plans to do anything with it at the moment.
Okay, because we're definitely here to be-
Because if we keep it in the PUD, like Dan said, we can't do anything with it if we don't do exactly that plan. So that's why we wanted to go back to the C two.
Yeah, I was, I'm definitely here to help people take steps forward and not backwards.
And even if we sold it later on, we would probably put a restriction on there for residential use, because we've restored eleven homes in that specific, ah, sorry, specific area in the last ten years. So we don't want to see that neighborhood go through anything other than just be a nice place to live. So we wouldn't ever let a car lot or anything come in there and do, and take that.
Yeah, just not to tie our hands from making benefits of that.
When this came to the council earlier this year, I saw it, and I was really excited about the project you guys have planned.
Yeah.
Was there a challenge that got in the way that kept you guys from being able to do that?
Kind of a combination in real estate, as this gentleman knows, time is money. And we started this in January of last year, and so we kind of missed a building window that we were shooting for to get it on the mark, get, start getting those on the market and get them sold. And then when we ran into a problem with, I think at one of the meetings, they decided they didn't want us to sell them at all, and just keep them and rent them, which we can't afford to do that. We wanted to build them and sell them to individuals like fifty-five plus, maybe that wanted to just live there and have a turnkey little house. And then, but we've kind of missed that window. Real estate's really taking a dive right now, so we're just decided to wait. Because it is a big risk for us, as we're just individuals, we're not builders.
Just to make a motion to approve.
Wait, is there any comment from public?
No, I'll sit down.
Is that area a flood zone?
Uh, microphone, please.
If you could.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's such a hairy, I'm speaking about, is it Dean's flood zone?
Yeah, there, right, there's just a small portion. Most of the flood zone, for a lot of those lots, are south, as you go south of that, yeah.
Still any other comments?
So, Dan, just to clarify, this was C two before the planned unit development, so we're just reverting it back to C two, what it was before?
Yep, correct.
Still any other comments? I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second. Brent Linford?
Yes.
Kaylee Mills?
Yes.
Erin Rooney?
Yes.
Shelby Vreeland?
Yes.
And Abe Gassimport?
Yes.
All right, five oh.
Item number six, this is the application number twenty-three dash zero zero eight. Discussion on a possible action or a request for a rezon from R one, a single-family dwelling to R two, general residential for a property located at sixteen twenty-three West Harrison, Williams Heights, Block seven, west seventy-five feet of Lot fourteen through twenty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As indicated, this is a rezon from R one to R two. This is similar to some of them we've had in the past. The applicant is looking to put an accessory dwelling unit on the property. There's an existing, existing, uh, single-family residence on the property. And obviously, being zoned R one, it can only accommodate the one unit. So in order to have the accessory dwelling unit, they're looking to rezon it to R two to put an accessory dwelling unit in the rear of the property. One of the things I always like to point out, because I know that with some of these rezones, there's probably some concern on, you know, going to R two and large multifamily development, or this and that. And with the requirements in our code, basically, that's not going to happen, just like this property. It's ten thousand five hundred square feet. Per our code, you need eight thousand square feet for the first two units, and then two thousand square feet for each additional unit. So even if somebody came and later on bulldozed that property in that, the most they can do is three units. The likelihood of three units is probably slim, given the size of units, given parking and that. So again, they probably have two units on it. And that'll be somewhat of a common theme with some of these rezones we're seeing is, as I've mentioned many of the times, you know, looking at diversifying the housing options in our community is, you know, something we really need to look at. And this is just another housing type that I think we will continue to see happen. We had one that did the same, that was at the corner of Walnut and Cleveland. They had a single-family residence there, we rezoned it to R two, so they could put an accessory dwelling unit there. And if you go by, you can't even tell it's on the same lot, or that it really stands out, you know, in that. And actually, I had a lot of people who've asked me about it in that, because, and honestly, the applicant is, for these next two items, that's kind of the one of the things that he was looking at to do with his properties in that. So with that, you know, the staff supports the rezon, we recommend approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Again, the applicant is here, if you have any questions of him.
I just happened to get a letter of notification, because I got a property just happened to bought from there. So that the question that I have, so at this time, you're just, there's no intention to tear down the building?
No.
You're just having it, just, so it's making a duplex of three units out of it?
Well, yeah, three units could be the most that was put on it, even if they raised it. Right now, he physically can't do that. So like you said, he's just adding one more unit, so it essentially would act as a detached duplex lot. But the, but the proposed house that he wants to put on there is more in line with an accessory dwelling unit. It's going to be around, I think, eight hundred square feet, seven hundred and fifty square feet, which is typical of, of an accessory dwelling unit.
What separates accessory dwelling units from infill development? Is it just tying into-
In this case, it's a preference, obviously, there's no determination, but in, in a actual code, is the size. There's limitations when you actually do implement an accessory dwelling unit. It usually falls in line with fifty percent of the livable area of the primary structure, hence accessory. So, you know, if you have a twelve hundred square foot home, you would have a six hundred square foot. They're often referred to as mother-in-law quarters, granny flats, you know, there's been a number of them in that that have, like I said, they've become more popular for two reasons. One, affordability, because again, it's another way to, especially in the rental end, to have an affordability. But also, with the lifestyles that we're seeing, as I indicated earlier, we have an aging population that in some cases, they will build an accessory dwelling unit on maybe one of their kid's property and live there, rather than go to, you know, maybe a retirement home, or that, or can't afford to, and, you know, that type of thing. So it's still, but obviously, then they wouldn't be in the house with, you know, their family and that. So there's a multiple things that accessory dwelling units provide for community. And we have some that exist in our community, because prior to the current code, you know, garage apartments, you know, and we have some of these smaller units in rear yards throughout the community, because back, you know, in the early days of Guthrie development, that was something that was quite common.
So does the accessory dwelling unit then get its own certificate of occupancy once it's-
Yes, it's an actual dwelling unit, yes.
So does it, it has its own, uh-
Yeah, its own utilities, and yeah, 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 yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. And again, in this case, I was just using it as a reference. In this case, there's no limitations, because again, we're going to R two. So as long as he can fit the other unit on there and meet the requirements, setbacks, lot coverage and all that, it could be a little more, it could be a little less. It was just, again, what he was looking at doing.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the applicant. Thank you.
Just name your name, please.
Josh Chapel.
Thank you for being here tonight. Do you have an idea of how big this bill is that you're planning to do?
Yeah, Dan mentioned the project that you guys approved on Walnut and Cleveland. I was actually renovating a property right across from there, when, and I know the applicant that applied for that. And so I started picking his brain about it, and I thought, man, I have some good lots that I think would be appropriate for that. And I think affordability is a huge issue, I think it's going to continue to be an issue for Guthrie, it's people moved to Oklahoma. And so I thought this was a definite win-win. I sent Dan probably four or five different locations that I thought would be appropriate, and he said, this won't, this won't work. And he gave me two that he, he thought were appropriate to, to approach you with, so, kind of the idea behind it. That one that you approved on Walnut, it's essentially the exact same floor plan, except I added a little bit of square footage to it, so.
So how mu- how much square footage is this one?
It's right around seven fifty.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what were you planning to do with that, is that like a rental?
Oh, for rental, yes.
Okay, okay. Do you have any idea yet, I guess, you said it's similar floor plan as the one on Walnut?
Yeah.
So it'll look a lot like that one, probably?
It'll be very similar, very similar, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second?
All right, got a motion by Rooney, second by Mills. Brent Linford?
Yes.
Kaylee Mills?
Yes.
Erin Rooney?
Yes.
Shelby Vreeland?
Yes.
And Abe Gassimport?
Yes.
All right, five oh.
Item number seven, application number twenty-three dash zero zero nine. Discussion on possible action or request for a rezon from R one, single-family dwelling to R two, general residential property located at two fourteen North Cedar. Street, Capitol Hill, Block forty, and south sixty-five feet of Lot seven through twelve. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the exact same scenario. The only difference is, this lot's smaller, it's only ninety-seven, or nine thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. So the most that could be on it per current code is two units in that. So again, even down the road, if both houses were demoed or that, they could only put two more units on it. But again, it's the, the same idea, same scenario and that, so I won't bore you with any more details. So give it back to the commission if you have any questions of me.
This house has been recently remodeled, isn't it?
Yes, that is correct.
What is the intention, I mean, it's similar to a single family right now? Yeah, let me ask you. This house just been, it looks really nice, so it is-
Yes, yes, we just recently remodeled that property. And like I said, I sent Dan probably four or five different properties, he thought this one was appropriate for, because behind the property, there's actually, someone has already planted off the land and made it a flat spot. So when we renovated the property, we only took the fence line to that edge of the, the flat spot in the back of the property, so.
So the intention is to build another building?
Yes, build another-
Not attached to this?
No, no, build the exact same, the exact same layout as the other one, that we're proposing on sixteen twenty-three West Harrison.
So will it be behind the fence that's currently there?
Yes.
Okay, how will it be accessed?
From the alley.
To the alley.
There's an alley easement there, yeah.
So that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Any questions? Thank you. Well, you did a good job on the remodel, I meant.
Yes, I even told them that, that was a big improvement for that area and that house, yes, looks really nice.
I managed that property for John Chambers for twenty-five years. Is there any other question, make your motion for approval.
All right.
I second?
Second, Kaylee, all right. Brent Linford?
Yes.
Kaylee Mills?
Yes.
Erin Rooney?
Yes.
Shelby Vreeland?
Yes.
And Abe Gassimport?
Yes.
All right, five oh, thank you.
Number eight, this is the application number twenty-three dash zero ten. Discussion on possible action or request for a rezon from R one, single-family dwelling to R two, general residential for a property located at eighteen oh-two West Logan Avenue, Capitol Heights, number three, addition, and Block eight, Lots thirteen through twenty-three, or staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you probably, once you read this agenda and are hearing this, there's, you know, kind of a common theme here of, you know, development in Guthrie and, and trying to accommodate both the development, but also keeping it in, in character and contents with our, our community. So this is over on Wes Logan, as indicated. Many of you probably may remember or know, there used to be a church there, it burned down. The church was torn down, the property sat for quite a while. The owner had removed all of the concrete in that. And now we have, obviously, an applicant that would like to develop that property. His intent is to split it into five eighty-four hundred square foot lots and put a duplex on each lot. So to kind of give you a context of, of, again, what this rezon would be, you know, I had indicated in the staff report that, uh, it's a forty-two thousand square foot property, when, when you put it all, all together in that. And the, from a purely, if you want to say, density standpoint, so if you just do the calculation where you do eight thousand square feet for the first unit, and two thousand square feet for each additional unit- from that pure number, you could technically put nineteen units on it. That's really not going to happen. Again, the likelihood would be probably twelve to fourteen units at a maximum in that. Again, his intent is to do around ten, again, five lots with two units on each. But even under the current R one zoning, you could do up to seven houses on there. Because you could split that up into six thousand square foot lots, which is the minimum for a single-family residential lot. And so basically, right now, as it's proposed, you're going from seven units to ten units. Worst-case scenario is twelve units. So the density for that i- is not in really any realistic realm going to increase much more being R two than it is R one. So again, I just wanted to point that out because, you know, there's always concern from, especially residents, about anytime we go to a multi-family zoning. And, and I, you know, I talked to one of them on the west side. It was on the West Harrison. I said it's warranted. You know, everybody's uncertain about change in that. But that's also why we have certain codes in place to try to maintain that. And, and my, you know, goal is to keep that character of our neighborhoods, especially at, in the original platted area, in that. And even I have talked about that. So anyway, I just wanted to kind of put that out there because it sounds like a lot when you first think about it, forty-two thousand square feet. But the reality is the actual number of units won't increase much more than what's allowed by code. So with that, I'll give it back to the commission. The applicant is here, if you have any questions of him.
Is there any comment from the topic?
How many proposed duplexes are?
It would be five.
Five?
Yeah, so it'd be a total of ten units, but five duplexes.
And that comes as how many lots?
That would be that whole forty-two thousand square feet, the whole block. Yeah, so basically, the whole block would now be five duplexes. Yeah.
These twelve lots they have, I mean, is the, the lots on the Capital Heights, Number Three, are they fifty-four or twenty-five?
The, yeah, the actual original ones are all twenty-five by one forty, which is the typical lot that was platted. So it's a thirty-five hundred square foot lot. And then obviously, if you take all twelve of them, you get the forty-two thousand. But yeah, they were all platted as twenty-five by one forty. And the typical development in town is taking two of them, which makes a seven thousand square foot lot and put a house on it.
Well, my two cents, you know, I, I think I saw an article just today about housing cost inflations across the country. And I think it's Minneapolis, having dropped their inflation rate to one percent, whereas Houston, they're seeing, I think it's five, six percent. And they credit it to housing diversity. And this is, I mean, this is an opportunity for housing diversity. My only worry is ending up with, how many duplexes do we say?
Five.
That are all identical and, and start to look like a, like track homes rather than the diverse community that we have here. So I'm a little torn on it, but the, the one thing, and, and, you know, you're right, that part is not something we can necessarily control. We can always ask the applicant if, if they would change it up a little bit. But this is within the Guthrie proper overlay district. So again, it does have the enhanced standards that would require it to be compatible with, you know, the, the typical development we've had in the past or compatibility in that. So it will be more than just your, I guess, run-of-the-mill duplex looking. And, and the applicant gave me a, a rendering of what he was looking to do in that. And it would be very fitting. And the parking's going to be in the back in that. It's actually going to be rear-loaded in that. So again, it's going to fit very well within what we're looking for in the overlay district.
Dan, is, is this going to be sold after it's filled out or is it going to?
I mean, you can ask the applicant. I'm assuming that they're just going to be, you know, rentals. Obviously, a duplex on the particular lot can be sold. Each individual unit could not be sold because it's a duplex. But at some time, if somebody wanted to buy one of the duplexes, they could because it's on separate property.
But the intention is going to be to keep the property and, and just rent it out?
Yes, yeah, if you want to go up there, thanks, Dan.
Denton Parker, we intend to keep these for rentals.
Well, I, I don't have anything further.
All right, thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, we have another comment?
Okay, hold on, yes, sir.
Will they be using an area builder or will they be using a, a builder outside of the city?
I live in Edmond and I'll be the builder.
Yeah.
Anything else? I'll make a motion to approve.
That's all right, I couldn't remember if we had a motion or not.
I'll second.
Second, all right. Got a motion by Rooney, second by Mills. Brent Linford?
Yes.
Kaylee Mills?
Yes.
Erin Rooney?
Yes.
Shelby Vreeland?
Yes.
And Abe Gassimport?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, guys, and gals.
Item number nine, an application number twenty-three dash eleven, discussion of possible action or reports of rezone of property located at three oh three East Lincoln Avenue, East Capital, Lot nine, four Lot ten, and the east half of the Lot eleven, from R one single-family dwelling, this ring card, planning unit development, general residential, planning unit development for three units, residential development. Part includes requests for acceptance to a minimum, a lot size, setbacks, and lot coverage and a parking. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This goes back to where I was talking earlier, just like the first item we had, where regardless of how updated a code is, a lot of times, you're going to have scenarios where the only way we can get through it is through the planned unit development process. So as you indicated, there's some exceptions that are being requested. And then there's going to be a specific development plan that will be approved and we'll have to adhere to for the development of the property. Generally, it, the, well, the property itself is five thousand six hundred square feet. They're looking to put three, four hundred and ninety-four square foot units on there. So it'd be three units in, all detached. One of the things that they were looking to want to do is possibly sell each individual lot at a later date. So they were kind of getting approval for not only the development as a whole, but maybe the possibility of splitting off the lots to sell at a later date. Each lot would be roughly around seventeen hundred and twenty square feet in that. The other exception is, is the overall lot. As I've indicated before, if you got three units, per the current code, you need ten thousand square feet. They have about half of that in that five thousand six hundred. The other thing is, is when you do separate the lots, the code requires a garage for each property. Given the size limitations and that, they don't have space for it. So they were getting exception to the garage requirement. There would be the one required parking space for each unit. However, it wouldn't have a garage if it was a separate property. And then there was some final for setbacks. The front setback is traditionally twenty-five. They want it as ten feet. Part of that reason is the southern part of the property is in the floodplain. So in order to get the units out of the floodplain, they tried to move it as north or close to the street as possible. The ten-foot setback from the front property line actually isn't all that out of sorts with our original platted area. Most of the homes in there are probably fifteen-foot front setbacks. Only more of the modern development actually meets our required setbacks in that. That's why even in the overlay district, we don't have a specific setback. We say you line it up with all the houses on the block. This isn't within the overlay district, hence the reason they need the exception. And then the same thing for the rear, the required is twenty feet, they're looking for seventeen feet. Also to kind of add, just like the other development that was done on First Street, the concept, I think, is good. It, it adds some diversity. As I indicated in my staff report, the one thing that I probably wasn't all that keen about was the type or the look of the homes. They're a flat roof. The renderings were put in the application. It's, it's a style that we don't traditionally have, especially in our original platted area. So one of the things I noted was, if it were to be approved, that we put a condition on there that they do meet the building or design of the overlay district or at least the typical design architecture that's within our surrounding area, original platted area. Actually, our general residential standards call that out as well. So it's probably something that we would have been dealing with anyway. But again, if, if the council or council, if the commission feels that what's there is fine, that's fine. It's, it's not the end of the world on my end. The one other thing, and I've kind of addressed this a little bit, but I'm not a big, I'm one of the planners that's not big on density, the term density and using density, because it's oftentimes very misleading. Where, you know, in the planning world, it's always X amount of units per, per acre. You know, twenty-two dwelling units per acre or whatever. For most people, it's like, what the heck is that? Or it's like, holy moly, that's a lot. So I always, you know, tried to look at it, again, at the context of, of what it, what the development is and, and the overall development and how it fits in with the neighborhood. Because we could have a development like this that technically is maybe forty dwelling units per acre, but it's three units on a property in that. So sometimes it isn't always, to me, apples to oranges in that. So I just wanted to put that in there because I had mentioned that in the comprehensive plan part is our comprehensive plan is older and, and still using what I call kind of an archaic way to determine, you know, compatibility with, with neighborhoods. So after all that rambling, staff, like I said, I, I, I don't think having projects like this are, are a bad thing. I like that. So the recommendation was to approve it with the exceptions that were requested. But then a condition also be that the building design relate more to the overlay district standards or typical development within our original platted area. The other thing is if the property is approved to be subdivided into three lots, an access easement will be required for the southern two homes and a common driveway agreement between all owners will be required. These documents will be required before a lot split approval is issued. And then finally, just the standard one, which it's, you know, it has to be developed in substantial compliance with the development plan. And if they have any amendments, they will have to go through the appropriate processes to get those amended. So I'll give it back to the commission for any questions you have of me. If not, the applicants are here and you can obviously ask them questions.
Boy, this is new. I guess the first thing that comes to mind, do we have any concerns? Fire barriers, there's a lot of little houses real close to each other, is there any?
The, the typical separation between structures is ten feet without needing any fire-rated walls or that, which they would have by the driveways in that. But obviously, all of the homes would have to, you know, meet all the applicable building code requirements. And this is probably the smallest you could get a unit and still meet building code requirements. You typically see maybe six hundred square feet as, as that. This is, like I said, close to five hundred, so it's in the ballpark.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then, next question then is if someday they decide to split these up and sell them, that drive, how does that work? That's not really a public drive if we've got two neighbors.
No, and that's what I was saying, one of the conditions would be that they would have to have an actual access easement. We have a number of lot splits where it's a similar scenario, larger properties, but a similar scenario. And as long as there's a recorded access easement, that's all that's required. They either have to front a public right of way or have a recorded access easement. And if you look, the property lines, the parking is going to be shared as well. And that's why I was saying there would need to be a common parking agreement to ensure that those are understood to be, you know, across property lines, but also for kind of the maintenance of it. If it functions, there's, with that scenario, there's definitely some potential issues. I, I won't, you know, deny that. The perfect scenario is that it would be for rentals and remain all one property.
Yeah.
In that. The problem with some of those agreements is it becomes a civil thing. You know, it's not anything we enforce. So if there's an issue with driveways or maintenance and all of that, it, it becomes among the homeowners.
Or EMS and somebody's parked in the drive.
Yeah, yeah, I, when I was out west, we had similar type developments. We actually had it where they were condo-ing duplexes. So it would function as a condo where you would buy the actual, you know, airspace of the unit as your own, but it was a duplex. Well, you have a two-person homeowners association. But it's not impossible, but it, as you can imagine, causes some issues. And so this is kind of a similar scenario. Here, at least, you'd have three, so there's at least a tie in the vote. But, but you would probably have to create something to that extent. But obviously, from a land use side, we just make sure that there's legal access.
I got a question.
Mm-hmm.
So as you well know, I had a water main break, the line going to my house.
Mm-hmm.
Real enjoyable experience. The original line went pretty much dead center on my neighbor's driveway.
Mm-hmm.
And then went into my house. And when that line broke, we had the choice of tearing up my neighbor's driveway, which would not be a thrilling experience with my neighbor or us. And then would have had to replace the driveway after I got it, the water line replaced, which would have jacked up the cost of the water main. So my question is, how are they going to run utilities to this? It looks like a nightmare to run sewer, water, and gas. Or if they don't run gas, that's really a mute topic.
Yeah.
Because to all of these properties, and then if something happens with one of those utilities is a, let's say they're running under the driveway like this, so stupid to do, then they're going to be tearing up the driveway to repair it because we all know that, they've improved a lot in the materials and everything that they put in water lines, but still, it happens. The sewer line could fail, the water line could fail. So where are those going to run? How are they going to get them to the property? And then what provisions are they going to have if it needs to be repaired or replaced?
Yes, obviously, scenario one where they rent it, very easy. Because you don't have the property lines and that. So they'll probably, you know, it, it would be like anything else, probably around the back of them or, or one line to, you know, different ones because you have the meters and all that. Separate properties, the scenario that likely would happen is that access easement also becomes a public utility easement. So it would probably be on the east side of the property, run all the way down. And so in, and then all of the utilities would be put in that, water, sewer, and that. And you would literally have your tap or, you know, your connection from that point directly to the house. And so the driveways probably won't be affected, the drive aisle, if you want to say, would in that. But that's typically how I've seen it with other properties that are even larger, is they put an actual public utility easement in there and run them all down that and then shoot them across in that, for that very reason. Because otherwise, like you said, you're not going to run them under a house. you're not gonna run them under a house, you're not gonna just run them across another property. You need to have them in an easement in that. So, that's the likely scenario that would happen with that. And we would require that, because even now, we have properties that, you know, in nineteen thirty, they did it as the crow flies, and it goes across three or four properties. And, hey, yeah, sorry, shout out to the contractor over here. And so, when they've had to replace that, we've required them to either make that an easement or redo it into an easement, so you don't have that exact problem, like you said, where you have your utilities going over other pub, or over other private properties with technically no access.
So, I would say that would need to be a requirement.
Yes, we can add that verbiage if you desire in there, that also that the access easement also be a utility easement to accommodate utilities. Yeah. That's not a problem. Oh, hold on, ma'am. Yeah, we're still with the commission. We'll open up public comments.
So, I guess where I stand on this is, you know, I really like affordable housing options, and I do like, you know, this type of development for bringing community together. But, I'm a little worried, you know, this little area is a neat little area of our town that I see a lot of vacant lots here. And I'm guessing there's probably some legacy families that have lived around this area. So, I guess I'm leaning towards what is the public. I'd like to hear what.
Yeah, and real quick, before we open the public, this one, I did receive one call. And they were more interested in how they could do this to their property, not necessarily three units, but maybe do duplexes in that, in a rezone to R2 to do duplexes. But, I did not receive any calls that were against it or anything like that. So, I just wanted to add, yeah.
Okay. Because that's, I guess what we're here to do is to act in the public's best interest, so.
The concern that I have is we go from six thousand, we go to big, to thirty-five hundred. Now, we're down to seventeen fifty. So, what is gonna happen to the next one? Are we just keep on reducing our land requirement?
No, and again, that's a valid, again, comment. And, yeah, in that, the, the...
They might lose their butts on it.
Right. The only thing I can say is, obviously, this is one particular application, and it's obviously having to go through this process to do that. So, it's, you know, not necessarily going to be every development or everything, but, you know, you have a valid point. If the commission doesn't feel comfortable with allowing separate properties, we can obviously, and you feel comfortable with it as a whole, as one property, then that obviously can be the recommendation, and you move forth, and you don't grant or the exceptions to allow for individual lots.
But then would we be in the same situation as we were with the other PUD?
No, you're right. Yeah, it still ties to the property. So, they would still have to develop it as the development plan. I was just given a scenario that it could still move forward as a whole development and not as individual lots. And obviously, the applicants here, so that's something you can see if they're comfortable with, or, you know, what their thoughts are when we get to that.
Yeah, I for sure am not in favor of selling individual lots on this, because they are crammed and they're so tight, and you do have the complications of easements and shared driveway and utilities and all that. I don't think that's a good scenario. I did have a question about the flood zone. Do you know how much of the property that flood?
About the rear thirty feet.
Okay. Do you have like square footage on that?
No, not offhand. But, it goes for the whole width of the lot, so it's probably a fifty by one thirty area.
Is there a creek back in there?
Yeah. It backs up to like the Snake Creek and that down in there. Yeah. Because as you start to get up into this area, it widens out with the floodplain, because as it continues to go westerly, it spans out more.
I didn't know it went back east.
So, that's, so that's cutting into the property, so the lots, like each individual lot that they were sold, like, they're gonna be smaller than?
That particular lot would be basically the same. It just, obviously, the most southern one would have a good portion of the floodplain on it. Yeah. And so, the house is just put right outside of that. Yeah. So, the lots would roughly be about the same. I think the southern one would be bigger because of the floodplain, but the minimum would be the seventeen twenty. Yeah.
Okay.
It's been a couple days since I did the math.
We won't function.
Carmen Bennett. Well, first off, how many lots are gonna be used to build these three single dwellings?
One.
What a lot?
One and a half, yeah.
Yeah, it's actually...
Okay. My next question. Which way will the front doors be facing on these three?
Easterly.
It'd be west, because east is three oh seven.
No, it'd be east. East, yeah. Because the lot goes north and south. Yeah, and so the houses will back up to the west side of the lot, and then they'll face to the east as that road, and that goes in there.
I mean, the half is to the east or the west, the half a lot?
Oh, the half a lot's to the east, if I remember right. Or is that to the west? Oh, it is to the west. Yeah, I couldn't remember. Yeah, they'll be combined. Obviously, they're all combined as one lot now, but from a legal description, it's one of the original platted lots plus half of the other lot to the west. Yeah.
It's very small. This is what they've been doing.
Yeah, because, yeah, because as I indicated, the lot itself is only fifty-six hundred?
Fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet.
Fifty-six hundred. If you do the technical math. Don't listen to the assessor, they don't know how to do math. It would be twelve and a half, yeah, thirty-five and a half. Did I do my math wrong? Did I do my math wrong? Okay, I might have. It was a long day that day. It's under six thousand square feet.
It's five thou, I just had to calculate it. Five thousand and five, two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Seventeen fifty a piece, yeah.
And math used to be my forte.
I live in that area, and I want to say the setback, put that map back up there, one of those houses is about twenty feet off the property, off the street, off the property. They're all the same, as is mine. So, if you take thirty feet from the back of it for the stream, and the twenty feet from a hundred and forty, it's about fifty. So, that leaves you with fifty from a hundred and forty as well.
Ten feet.
Ninety, ninety feet. And you're gonna put three units with parking, and it's thirty-seven feet wide, and a car is eighteen. So, you're gonna turn this car into eighteen, put a house, and back it back out of there? It'll never happen. I'm gonna say never, but I don't see it.
It's difficult.
And then you have three units in the neighborhood that's gonna bring riffraff. I live there. And the renting that's going on now is riffraff. And you're gonna put two little spick houses in there. And what happens to the person that owns the other lot? When they decide they want to do something, then what are they gonna do? Yeah. And then you're gonna destroy that, my property. My mom's property is right down the corner. You're gonna make that curve, which, anyway, I'm gonna say nothing about that. But, anyway, people turn there, and that's gonna be right that it got apart from the street. How you gonna divide? I mean, I don't know how I can add up two, but I see these things being a hazard.
Thank you.
I'm a property owner in the, in the area too, and I'm all for development of the area. But, I don't really see how this project fits in with the homes that are, existing homes that are there now, and how the development for future homes could go in the future. The ten-foot, the ten-foot from the street where you start, that would stand out like a sore thumb when you coming up and down the view of the, of the neighborhood, which would totally mess up the view of the neighborhood. It's a beautiful area down there. It's really green, and it's really pretty. You know, all the houses are set back, you know, on a consistent basis. Putting a small home that doesn't really fit with the landscape up on, close to the street would really destroy kind of the scene of the area down there, I would believe. And I really wouldn't be in favor of it, to be quite honest. I think those are just, it's just too much and too small of an area. But, I am for development of the area. But, I don't think that would improve the people's, our property values down there. And like Mr. Bennett said, I don't think that the demographic would be a nice demographic to want to stay in those particular units.
And just to clarify, I mean, because it still makes his point valid, I think, but the setbacks are based off property line, not edge of street. So, there's probably twenty feet from the actual edge of street, or twenty-five feet from edge of street to where the house will sit. Because there's always a portion of undeveloped right-of-way in that area. And I just wanted to clarify, so. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, City Council Chair.
Thank you, thank you.
My name is Larry Donnell Whitley Jr., United States Marine Veteran.
Nice.
Retired. Mike grandmother has that property down there. That's the one that's in concern with three oh three and three oh one. I've lived there, grew up there, played there many times, probably jumped in the pool back there, that I called the pool back in the day. I'm speaking on behalf of Roscoe Burton. He's the current one that's on, that's paying the taxes for our property. I've been maintaining best what I could with along with some of the family. But, my particular question there is if I have this proposal right here that three units would be put on there, Mr. Cassick, that will infringe upon the property line that I've already had surveyed, on behalf of Mr. Roscoe Burton, which he's currently in Detroit, Michigan. And I'm here on his behalf within regards to this new proposed development. And as Mr. Bennett stated here, I am in favor of development. Is there anything that council or Mr. Cassick, that the city can assist with, if you all want to do with proposing of development with, if we can bring that up, area up, so it won't be a flood zone, and put a breakdown off in there back where the creek is, so when you do flood, it can divert the water, and it will not be a flooding zone?
Yeah. The quick and easy answer is yes, but it costs a lot of money. Because we, there are areas, anytime you have a flood zone, because there's, there's two areas that you always have. There's floodway, which you can't build anything, no matter what, in that. And then you have the floodplain. The floodway, you still have a mechanism to do studies to try to do that, but they're very costly. They're doing one over by Brahms in that, and for that small property is around thirty thousand dollars in that. But, the floodplain, you know, is a little bit easier to deal with. But, those are always something that get tough, as you indicated, when you have individual lots. If there's ever a desire of the different property owners to want to find a solution for all of their properties for better development, we would definitely, you know, sit down with you and go over some of the scenarios, because that's probably the most likely way to get most of the floodplain properties in our community developable, is getting everybody on the same page and contributing, if you want to say, their fair share to get there. So, that's something that, you know, down the road, if you ever want to stop by or that, we can definitely discuss it in that. Because in that area, as indicated, you know, there's some vacant properties. There has been some not-so-good-looking houses. Over the last few years, through our dilapidated structure program, we have taken care of some of those, and we continue to do that. But, I've, I've been really happy to see the development happen in that area, along East Grant, East Lincoln, and even the east side, because I've commented how it's spread itself out, which is good. One thing we don't want to do is have one particular area basically in bar, you know, have all the development at once, because that just, you know, it isn't good for the neighborhood prices. So, anyway. But, I wanted to say, and I greatly apologize, I did get a call from Roscoe, what was his last name? I'm sorry.
His name is Roscoe Burton?
Burton. I did get a call from him, because he did get the notice, and he had indicated there would be a representative here in that. He wasn't necessarily against it, but there, he, you know, had some concerns, and he said he was gonna send a rep. So, again, I apologize, because I did get that call.
Yes, that is correct. And just, I reflect here, I've been doing my homework, and I thank you all for bringing this up as well. As Mr. Bennett stated too, I'm all about for developing too. Because as my grandmother's house, our grandmother's house here, there's a lot of memories there, at that land, that our people have pioneered for. And I would like to see that be developed. And on behalf of Mr. Burton, if there's anything that we can do with the city, the city of Guthrie, and also to develop that relationship to also improve in the look of the community, I'm all in favor for that. But, as for now, with Mr. Bennett stating that putting the three units down on there, I believe, three detached units?
Yes, that's correct.
That would be a cause of influence of a bunch of traffic. And the senior citizens that are there, it is quiet. So, you know, I just, you know, I'm open to all, you know, opinions and solutions, and I'm willing to participate as well. Like I said, I have all paperwork as far as after I got it all surveyed, all four corners showing and depicting with property line.
Yeah. Well, I was gonna say, and...
That would be tight, because as you referenced, that, as you also referenced, Mr. Lemon, that utilities would have to be an easement as well. Because, excuse my language, that would be hell to go back and tear up a driveway, you know, inconvenience, you know, that, just that lot down through there. And then just the amount of utilities coming down through there, that is wastewater, then your freshwater, your gas utility lines, and your electric lines. But, I believe it's aerial electrical down through that area.
Yeah, most everything around town is.
But, with something is developed through there, I guess because of the flood zone, Mr. Cassick, that maybe that it could be considered within the access of the easement lines. But, with the totality of just that amount of traffic right in that little, small, congested area, I don't think it would be feasible. As a one-single dwelling family unit, yes, as the location that's to the east of them would be, as we have known, the space residence. Yes, we could see a one-single family unit dwelling elongated that way to complement the land, the geographical land structure that is outlined down there. And then from roughly from the basis of the survey that what I have performed and surveyed, that's too tiny of a small spot. That'd be a total inconvenience. But, like I said, I'm all for development. So, if there's any way we can improve that, I'm all ears. And I will relay to Mr. Burton to follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, or? Oh, yes, ma'am.
Carmen Bennett. I just want to say this. The dead end of Broad is right there by. Okay. Four homes, that's where my husband grew up. Four houses was, was in that seven hundred block on Broad, dead end. When it flooded, the flood might would come to the back door. But, now there's no houses there. And now the floodwater is really coming up to the intersection of Broad and Lincoln. And so, I just want to just say, there's something that's going on. I know water's running down there. It was running from Pine down, and it's running from north to, to south. And so, I just want you all, when you're planning and everything, think about where that floodwater... I just want you all, when you're planning and everything, think about where that flood bottom is, uh, going. Uh, my son has, uh, umpteen, he, he owns the whole block. And what can he do with it?
Yeah, the comments?
The same other block.
Well, I think my mom's speaking, is there any way that in the future, and I know you alluded to this earlier, about putting drainage systems and upgrading drainage in that area to maybe, you know, beam and flood well at some point, but if you-
Yeah, and, and I was gonna say, if you, if you guys don't mind hanging around when the meeting's over, I'd be more than happy to talk to you a little more and give you some information, uh, and, and go from there. 'Cause, yeah, definitely, uh, would like to speak to you. Yeah.
And, and to swear footage of the three units, four hundred?
Yeah, what was it, four hundred and fifty or four, four ninety-four, four ninety-four?
If that would be fit on a single family, you know, dwelling, you know, that would be more of like a single-person family dwelling out.
Uh, yeah, you're not wrong about that. They, they definitely aren't gonna be probably rented for a, you know, two, three, four, five-member family. It, it would probably be a single person or maybe a couple. Yeah.
Do we? I'd like to speak to a representative from the developer. Do we have a?
Yeah, the applicant's here, yeah.
Cool, actually. Thank you, sir. First, I'd like to say, you know, appreciate y'all's investment in our community and the improvements that y'all have already made. This, I have to say, this worries me a little bit. What, do we have any other options? Is there any flexibility? I understand you guys are in the business to bake money.
This isn't actually our property, this is a guy that owns it that came to us and wanted to build these on this property. So, I mean, I can answer so many questions for him, but I tried to get him here, so if this did happen, then you guys could ask him.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can go to him and, and try to see if there's any other options, like what are you thinking?
Um, well. 'Cause, 'cause real quick too, I was just gonna, so the commission, uh, ha, has this, you know, if there seems to be some avenue to maybe look at other options, obviously, one of the things you can do is table the item tonight, uh, to the next meeting or a following meeting thereafter, uh, and give the applicant time to maybe have a revised plan. Uh, and then that revised plan could come back to you, and at that point, uh, you know, we can, uh, resume discussions and, and try to move it forward. But make sure that whatever timeframe you decide, that it's on one of our planning commission meetings, 'cause obviously the public's here, and so we wanna make sure that they have a specific date that it would be coming back. So if they obviously want to attend, they can, uh, in that. So again, that's an option too, rather than just saying we're gonna deny it and, and move it on. Uh, you know, you have the prerogative to say, hey, why don't we table it and, you know, uh, bring us back maybe another option?
I, uh, I thought the big was bad.
The what?
I thought the big was bad.
You're not gonna let that go, Abe, are you?
But, I mean, as bad as I want that area to develop, but this is just not gonna, this, this project is just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make sense, you have a, if the lot were along with the Lincoln, with the hundred and forty feet or so along the Lincoln Street, it would have made much, much more sense. But for them to be at, uh, thirty-seven fifty, a lot there by a hundred and forty, of course, part of that is probably to be an easement for the utilities. So it's not, this is just... I think I like the big better.
I knew I'd get you there.
I don't have a warm, fuzzy feeling about this as well. And if I were to have to vote on it tonight, I would say deny. Uh, I would be more than happy to table it and have further discussion with a different plan at a later date.
What would the difference be between tabling this or denying it and them coming back with another?
Well, it, it just kinda, I guess, saves that process, could, or that time or that process, 'cause, yeah, obviously, right now, if you move it for denial, and then the council says denial, technically, well, if you have a different plan, you're fine, but you can't submit a similar, similar, uh, application for at least six months after a denial. Uh, if they change it, obviously, they could do that. But it, it could possibly save that timeframe of going through all the process and then trying to make them resubmit a plan. 'Cause then we also have to go through all the notification and, and all of that stuff, so you're adding probably another sixty, uh, or more days onto it. Whereas if we table it, we might be able to get it in thirty days or, or so. Uh, I don't know, obviously, and, and, and I'm not sure the applicant, you know, uh, knows either what may or may not be viable, uh, at this point. So i- it was just an option, uh, given to you, uh, that you wouldn't necessarily have to deny it, 'cause you always have the ability, as you know, to table it and get an updated, uh, version that may be more palatable for you guys to move forward.
I would like to say I, I do share these concerns, I'm not in favor of this plan as written. Um, the requested exceptions are pretty far outside the current code requirements, and as we've already stated, I think it's three units just really crammed in there, close together, I think you're gonna have issues with that. Um, as I said before, I'm not in favor of selling these properties, I don't think that's gonna be a good arrangement. Um, so I would request, um, that they come back with a plan for two dwellings, two units, instead of three, and we could look at, we could look at that again. Um, I also would recommend maybe a little different style, um, to fit in with, you know, neighborhood, and just look at Guthrie and that kind of thing. That, that would be my request on that. I think Shelby, where you wanna say something down there?
I just had a question for the owner, but I don't know if you would know, do you know what they plan on renting these for?
Like price-wise?
I mean.
No, I have no idea.
Okay.
I have no idea.
Just 'cause we're wanting to approve affordable housing for our community, so if they're trying to rent-
The splitting of the lots too is not necessarily, it doesn't have to happen, where they can sell each lot. That was, that was something they just asked if it's possible, I talked to Dan, we had talked about it, and that's why it was in there, just in case later on, if they, if they wanted to. It's not a miss, you know, necessity, so.
My thought was just like a four hundred and ninety-four square foot, and if they're trying to rent it for like twelve hundred, that's just crazy to me, so I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, so. But I have no idea.
I'd like to make a statement, if they are renting for two lots less, then again, the rift got down there. And the whole idea is if you look at the houses across the street, there's two of them, and that's what's living there. And the more you put those little houses, or something in there that's gonna bring them into that neighborhood, that's what we're gonna have, the homeless are moving in down there, and we're doing this, city's doing nothing about it. You can't call anybody, they don't do anything, they're living in the forest right by my house, I can go down and put my hands on them any day of the week, and they're walking it down the street, cursing, hollering at us, and my wife is afraid to come outside, and then you gonna put this little...
His mom lives down there.
Yes, on the corner, right from where they're talking about.
That's a street that, is that a broad?
Yeah, broad, broad, yeah, 'cause it basically dead ends there. Yeah, 'cause there's, obviously, the broad right-of-way continues, but there isn't a physical road there, yeah.
But is that as far as the plats are concerned?
No, that's why I was saying, there's a platted right-of-way for Broad that goes through there, it's just, there's not a physical road there, so. The physical road turns onto Lincoln, and that makes kind of the curve, but there's an actual right-of-way that still keeps going down.
So there's chance-
Aaron, can you put the, put the zoning map up real quick?
Yeah, it's actually, this is-
Yeah, 'cause you can see here, this, yeah, that's good, Aaron, right there. See, this broad right-of-way, it keeps going all the way down. But the road itself physically ends right in here.
We could do some really neat stuff in that area, especially over the creek.
If they were part of the corner lot, they could use this, 'cause this is also, you know, any road or easements as well.
And that, and that's quite common throughout our original platted area, where we have existing rights-of-way, uh, that are overgrown, or don't physically have roads there, but, uh, some utilities exist in them and that, uh, but, yeah. Yeah, 'cause even over here-
As you go over here, there's, as you see, the right-of-way continues, but physically it ties in the Lincoln, and that's it.
Boy, those lots backing up to the creek, those, those could be really nice.
Yeah, and, and, and as the gentleman indicated, if we can, you know, some point get some type of, of program, I guess, for lack of better word, together to try to make some of these, um, lots that are, you know, either in the floodplain or just not physically accessible at this point, they're just overgrown, and, and get them to a usable state, it's, it's better for everyone.
Yeah, I think there's some opportunity there.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to table this. Do we need to do it till the next meeting, or do you think we need two months?
Uh, ask the applicant what he would be comfortable with in a timeframe. It would be the, yeah, in September, I'll give you a date here real quick. It would be, get my darn calendar to work here. Uh, it would be September fourteenth, that's the second Thursday in September, so it'd be September fourteenth.
Well, I just would like to remind you, if the unit won't work.
All right.
All right, that's, that's the main thing.
So we have a motion to continue it to the nine fourteen twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, with the basically idea that the applicant will bring an updated, uh, development plan that would be more feasible. Okay, and that obviously was a motion by Kaylee, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, all right, so we got a motion in a second. Brent Limford?
Yes.
Kaylee Mills?
Yes.
Erin Rooney?
Yes.
Shelby Vreeland?
Yes.
And Abe Gassenfor. All right, so we have it tableed till the nine fourteen Planning Commission meeting. Yeah, and then the next item is, was the one I indicated, uh, at the beginning, that has been withdrawn, so we do not need to hear that item. So we go to staff comments, and staff has none other, well, I should say, thank you for, you know, this is probably one of the longer meetings you guys have had, uh, so thank you for, uh, you know, sustaining the meeting, but more importantly, also being, uh, you know, engaged. I think today's meeting was really good, a lot of good discussion. Also really appreciate the, uh, public that shows up, uh, I honestly wish we had more that would just come to listen and, and engage, 'cause it obviously would only make our community better, uh, in that, so, anyway, I just wanna say thanks to the commission. And then, once again, uh, welcome Kaylee to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
It's the commission's comment. I'd like to welcome you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I, I would like to say thank you to all of you who took the time to come, we appreciate hearing from you guys, that's helpful. So, thank you for all of your work and your team, all that you guys have done.
The only, uh, comments that I had, I just, it's curious. All of this rezoning for R two, is it coincidental, or has something to do with the big?
No, it, it's, it's honestly trying to, um, accommodate what is becoming more of a trend for development in our community. Uh, it's also a trend, believe it or not, uh, not only in the state of Oklahoma, but across the country. Uh, we're like many communities, uh, we're fortunate that a lot of the housing costs and, and affordability hasn't gotten to the point of a lot of communities. Uh, but this theme is definitely, uh, had a lot of national traction. Uh, I will tell you, there's a few states that have even gone as far as making it state law, that you have to allow up to two units per property, and accessory dwelling units, and a lot of those to try to tame, if you wanna say, the affordability factor. Uh, as Aaron indicated, uh, there's definitely proof to show that diversifying your housing, uh, and that does help. Uh, we're at a point where we're never gonna see a hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes anymore, but we're, well, I should say, on, on average. But we're definitely in a position where we can stabilize, you know, our, our local economy and affordability, both on the ownership side as well as, as the rental side, uh, in that. But lastly, I will say, and, and I told you this, Abe, you know, I am also very, um, uh, supportive, I guess, of keeping the character of Guthrie and what makes Guthrie Guthrie, uh, in that. 'Cause I do agree that just because somebody else is doing it, doesn't mean we have to do it or vice versa, in that. And, and I really feel that we can do that. We can accommodate growth, but still keep that character and core values that have made Guthrie Guthrie in that. And it's just like tonight, where, you know, it, it takes, as they, they always say in a village, uh, it takes a community. You know, we all need to, uh, communicate, and we all need to work together, and, and I'm starting to see more of that, which is great. It, it really makes me happy, so, sorry to keep going, I just get excited sometimes.
No, just my hope for the big initiative, 'cause that, that's the big topic, um, is really the housing diversity. I'd like to be able to see, you know, doctors living next to mechanics, ne, you know, living next to the people working at our local restaurants. I think, you know, a community takes all types. And, um, you know, it's gonna take cooperation like we saw tonight, and asking tough questions, and having, you know, tough conversations. And I think we're heading in the right direction, so, I appreciate everyone coming tonight.